Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm Shannon Rutherford, the town planner for Farmington. We'll start the Town Plan and Zoning Commission meeting with a roll call of commission members. Matthew Bandl.
Present.
Roja Afshar.
Present.
David St. Germain.
Here.
Liz Sanford.
Here.
Scott Halsted.
Here.
And I will note for record that regular Commissioner Robert Canto is absent at the moment. Alternates Bruce Polsky.
Here.
Mike Tucci.
Here.
And Kyla Zimmerman is absent. Mr. Chair, it is all yours.
All right, very good. Welcome, everybody, to the April 22 Town Plan and Zoning Meeting. My name is Scott Halsted. We've got a few items of new business today, no public hearings. I guess with Mr. Canto, Commissioner Canto being absent, Bruce, are you willing to fill in for Bobby?
I am.
Great. All right, so let's get started. Our first new business item is McPhee Electric Site Plan Approval for Parking Lot Renovation and Driveway Reconstruction at 509 Main Street.
Hi, my name is Tristan Wallace. I'm with Lurio Engineering here representing McPhee Electric and the owner of McPhee Realty for the 509 Main Street property. The existing property is an office building, Zone C1. The site has two existing drives that are direct into the site and a common drive just north of the of the site. As you can see right there on that plan, that's the common drive that goes to that property and also the property to the rear. The site has a few pre-existing non-conformities. The lot area is around 22,000 square feet, which is below the required 40,000 for the zone. The current conditions, there are no actual delineated parking spaces and all those parking, the parking area is all within the front yard setback. And the site lighting is a bit, not inadequate, but a bit less than than what would be ideal for for the property. Overall, with the with the site configuration and the direct drives, the site is a little, it's a bit not conducive for proper flow and parking on the site. So the purpose of this project is to try to improve the the site conditions. The proposed conditions are the closure of the central drive. So if you see, north is kind of to the right. And the southern drive will remain and the northern drive will remain and be reconfigured. And then the interior parking will be realigned. The proposal is increasing the parking above the requirement to about 19 spaces, which will accommodate the use on the site. And the, like I said, the closure of the drive in the middle will improve traffic flow through in and out of the the property. The project started some time ago, and one of the major components of this was the DOT requirements for the site were off of Route 10. So that included the driveway closure and the driveway expansion and also the the area where we show some delineated parking in the front yard setback. As of a year ago, the lease agreement was agreed with with DOT. So they're they are okay with us placing those parking spaces in that front yard setback. However, based off the requirements of the town, we had to show that there was another area on an adjacent parcel that is in kind of common ownership that can accommodate those spaces if the time comes that the DOT want to reclaim that that right away for those spaces. But as of now, there's no sign of doing that, and they have agreed to the the lease agreement. So those those spaces as stands are acceptable from the DOT. The encroachment permit, as I said, for the the drive reconstruction was approved as well. The permit hasn't been pulled, of course, because that goes with construction, but it was approved. One of the components of that was widening the common drive to better accommodate truck traffic in and out of the site. We did a queuing analysis on the intersection of Main Street and Northwest Drive to ensure that there was no impact from traffic. And all those were were perceived as approval, as approved by the DOT. Site grading and drainage. The existing condition of the site, the site was mostly surface flow into Route 10. In this reconfiguration, we're creating a curb line and pulling the drainage into the site to contain it onsite. As you can see, there's a row of catch bases going throughout the the interior of the property and then three subsequent dry wells as well to infiltrate the water quality volume. As before, it was all surface flow. There was no groundwater recharge or treatment of the water quality volume. As of right now, we do capture that, trying to infiltrate their water quality volume. And any anything above that level will go out into a pipe conveyance into the roadway. So creating a more conveyed stormwater flow into the into Route 10. So road sediment control, the that will be handled. Silt sacks will be in any new or existing structures in the proximity of the construction. We're showing a construction entrance at the main shared drive. That's where we anticipate most of the construction flow to come in and out of the site. And we will also accommodate some silt fencing and things like that. And that will be phased as the construction happens to try to mitigate any flow off the site. And then as we start construction on the site, we'll we'll have that in place. Landscaping as well and site lighting. Landscaping will be enhanced on the site to just create some more aesthetic appeal. The sign, as it currently stands, is in the DOT right away. That will be moved. Of course, the applicant is aware that once the sign is picked, that will have to be permitted at that time. But we are showing that the sign will be moved onto our property to get out of the DOTs right away, and it's pushed back enough to where there is no sightline issues there as well. So we'll show some improved landscaping in that area, some landscaping in front of the site. That the reconstruction of this parking lot will include the site entrance into the building, just to try to enhance that that area as well. Site lighting will be some improvements there. We'll have, we show some some additional poles in the parking area and in the drive area. We do have a photo metrics plans that shows that that those will accommodate the appropriate lighting and limit any bleed off into the off the off the property. So overall, we feel like this is a much of an enhancement of the existing conditions on the site. It accommodates the parking, reduces the non-conformities onsite, manages stormwater in a better way, and and overall just meets the expectations of the of the property. So if there's any questions or anything like that, I'll be glad to answer.
All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. We'll turn it over to the commissioners for questions. Roja, any questions?
Sure. Thank you very much for being here tonight and for your great presentation. So there were some comments issued by our engineers on April 17. Would you be able to address those comments? Is everything?
Yeah.
hoping to be?
Absolutely. I actually spoke with Shannon last week. We went through all the all the comments, and we feel like there are no, there are no comments that necessarily created a design change. And most of those hopefully can be accommodated as a condition of the approval and working out with the staff directly.
Perfect. Thanks. No further questions.
Absolutely.
All right, Matt?
No questions for me. Thank you.
Liz?
Just a quick one. How long is the lease with the state on the the agreement? Just curious, is it a?
Yeah, so 20-year with an automatic renewal. And I believe it still has the ability to be reviewed every year, but that's the term of the the lease. Yeah.
That's good. Just so you guys don't have to jump through hoops.
No, 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 absolutely.
Six months or years.
Yep, for sure.
It is the state we're talking.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Bruce?
No new questions.
Dave?
No questions.
Mike?
Thank you for the presentation.
No problem. Okay, thank you.
All right. I mean, it seems pretty straightforward, right? Improvement to the site, which we always like to see, so we appreciate the thoroughness of the presentation. Anybody have any other questions before we?
Okay. Just my one comment is a great to see a stormwater drainage plan.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Flooding down Route 10.
We work with Shannon a lot, and much doesn't go through her without appropriate stormwater plan, so. All right.
Great.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, so we need a motion in a second, please.
I'd like to make a motion for approval for the site plan for McPhee Electric for the parking lot renovation and driveway reconstruction at 509 Main Street.
Second.
All right. Everybody know what we're voting on? Everybody comfortable voting? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Great. Thank you. All right, moving on to item number two, Par Spring LLC Site Plan Approval for the conversion of the existing administrative office into two residential units. Two building additions construct fire pit grilling areas and construction of deferred parking spaces at Five Spring Lane. Good evening.
Good evening. Just for the record, Rock M. and Associate Civil Engineer with SLR International Corporation out of 99 Realty Drive, Chesham, Connecticut, here on behalf of the applicant, PAR Spring LLC, here before you regarding Five Spring Lane over next to Scott Swamp Road. So literally just there, just before this meeting. So give everybody some context, some existing conditions. So the property that is currently known as The Croft years ago was the original Centennial Inn. Subsequent to this public or this site plan meeting, we received TPZ approval in both 2009 and 2016 for the conversion of the the Centennial Inn to become apartments. As part of that approval, there were 95 apartments as part of that approval. Specifically, 190 parking spaces were part of those approval. 168 of those were constructed with 22 deferred. As part of this application, we're looking for kind of a multitude of different little pieces throughout the site. One specifically is their existing leasing office is looking to be slated to be renovated to develop two new one-bedroom unit and a one-two-bedroom unit, so two units total to increase the amount of units to 97. With that, obviously, we have an increase in the parking demand that's required. So we're going to be utilizing some of those deferred spaces that we originally approved for, as well as increasing the amount of parking onsite to accommodate two other small billing additions. So there's a billing addition that's going to be located at the existing fitness center, which is about 312 square feet. This is essentially going to be the new office that's so existing conditions today is the offices are located in the building that they're renovating for the units. They need somewhere to go, so they're putting a billing addition that's going to be located directly right here. The 312 square feet to accommodate those offices. Additionally, with that, there's another small billing addition of 260 square feet on the existing pool. I guess I think it's two pool bathrooms. And what they're looking to do with this is to essentially put a laundry room kind of attached to that. Now, because of all the the changes in the uses and the the building square addition, we're also providing five or four parking spaces located directly adjacent to the pool space, which Shannon is graciously enough to highlight for me. So in summary of the kind of the building-related aspects, a 312-square-foot addition, a 260-square-foot addition, and the conversion of existing kind of leasing space to become residential apartments. We're looking for five of the deferred spaces to become permanent parking spaces and four new parking spaces. The remaining parking that's kind of highlighted in gray throughout, those will remain as deferred parking spaces. So for a total of 194 parking spaces, if they were to be fully constructed, we're looking for total 177 parking spaces to be constructed at the end of the permit, leaving 17 deferred spaces in the long run. Some small other items that are being located are a couple grill areas. So there is the combination fire pit grill area that's going to have, I think they're concrete pavers, if I'm not mistaken, that we're calling out. Yeah, fancy concrete pavers. So if you can zoom into the detail, this is located right there. So it's a 20 by 20 pad that's going to have a couple picnic tables and some Adirondack chairs with a gas fire pit located in the center and then two grills that are located just adjacent to it. We're looking for two of those to be located. One, I think it's building I, which is oh, that's building A, right. That's the main building. So in between building A and the main building, which Shannon is highlighting to the north. If you could go there. Yep.
So near where the the new?
Yep, so directly adjacent to the billing addition and the new parking or the original deferred parking spaces that will now become permanent. So looking for it over there, specifically as part of the planner's report in the in the Wetlands Commission, there's a yard drain that's directly located to there. So one of the conditions of approval, so if you should approve it, would be to adjust the location of this to kind of get away from that yard drain. It is, I looked at it just before the meeting. It does not have a stencil currently that says no dumping, that it goes to waterways. And the owner is completely amenable to putting a new drain or a new grate to make sure that there's going to be no dumping or anything in place. It does already have a two-foot sump, so that is one thing I am kind of happy about. Subsequent to that, we are also looking for the southern portion to also have the grill area. This one, I think, is actually in a really good spot. It's directly between two areas of trees and a very easy, very easy place to construct it. It's very flat, and there's really nothing to be in conflict with. If we were to put it further south, we'd start clearing trees. As well, if it was even further south, closer to the basketball court. There's about 33 feet in between the building and the basketball court, and it's 22 or 20 feet wide. It's getting a little tight toward the building, so I think the location kind of makes the most sense. And I think that kind of covers what we're actually proposing. Obviously, with the the construction, we're looking to also provide best management practice with regard to a road control. So luckily for us, these are very small disturbances, so we're using silt socks throughout. Everything down gradient of what the actual construction is going to be. And that's kind of the project in a nutshell. So happy to answer any question.
All right, great. Thank you so much. Roja, any questions?
Well, thanks for your presentation. We appreciate it. So the the town has some concerns about the location of the grills. Are you aware of?
Correct.
Yes.
So as part of the conditions approval, we'd be more than willing to work with town staff to find a perfect location. But as it stands from my site visit and now, at least one of those locations, I kind of feel like is the least amount of disturbance. So I'd like to leave that where it is. The other location to to the north probably can be moved. It really is more of a privacy conversation. As you go further north, you're getting closer and closer to Scott Swamp Road. So you're kind of losing privacy as you bring it closer north, so that's obviously something we could work with town staff on, making it perfect.
Okay, perfect. And then another concern that the town has is the trash.
That's the one thing I didn't actually. So we are more than amenable to put trash receptacles, both trash and recycling next to every grill. Or I guess every location, essentially.
Thank you. No further questions for me.
Beautiful.
Matt?
Both of my questions have been answered. Appreciate it.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Bob?
Just on the trash and recycling, do you have a staff member on site that's going to?
Yeah, so they have, I guess there's a facilities manager that deals with all the the ins and outs of the the development itself. So I assume they just add a part of their operations.
Okay, perfect. I just don't want any critters in there, because there's others. Critters in that area I grew up across the street. No questions. We're good.
Liz?
No, I think all my questions have been answered. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Of course. Dave?
I guess I'd just be wondering about anything for ash dumping from the fire pits.
All right, so it's gas-fired.
Oh.
So hopefully there's nothing.
All right. Thanks. Thank you.
Not a problem.
Bruce?
I'm still on the on the on the grass, gas fire pit and and grill. Are you going to do anything to control unauthorized access to that? Like, how will how will that function?
Use? So as I kind of alluded to, there's a property manager. So I assume the property manager already has kind of a security system in place for when they, you know, have any residents that either have visitors or somebody that just kind of wanders in. So that's already part of their existing facility and how they handle everybody coming in and out.
All right, thank you.
So don't try sneaking in there.
Marshmallows are a thing.
Mike?
Thank you.
Not a problem.
So I had a question about the setup. Are the fire pit and the grill is going to use a common propane tank or are they each going to have a separate heating source?
So it's all, so I don't hold me to this one, because I think it would be all natural gas coming from the closest building.
Okay.
Every obvious shut-off valve that would possibly be required. Typically, what happens is they would have individual connections, and it wouldn't be part of a singular main. So you'd be able to shut off for which you're using. And then I believe there's also safety valves on the actual units themselves.
Good to hear. We get a lot of gas calls.
Yeah.
Here. And my second question was, would the property manager be someone who will maintain the grills for?
Yeah, so I assume there's
critters coming for that as well.
Two, one of two things usually happens in these instances. The honor system, obviously. So if you're a resident using it, usually you'd kind of pay it forward to make sure you clean after you've used it. But because they do have an onsite facility manager, it's probably part of their normal routine, because there are already grills that are located throughout the site. They're probably just adding some to the docket.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions.
Not a problem.
All right, appreciate the presentation very much. Shannon, I actually have a question for you. With the fire pit locations, are you okay continuing to work with them on those locations? Do you need us?
Yeah, that's why I said consider. Okay. So I had not walked the property. So I'm looking at it in a 2D standpoint, and I could see trees, but I wasn't sure how much. So so for the south one, if it makes, my concern was the embankment. But we've got a nice flat area.
It's actually about 35 feet between the curb line and the embankment as it starts sloping, so it might be actually perfect.
So you've got plenty of room. And then same even with the northern one, I noticed there's there's topography, so I don't want to I don't want to create more cut-and-fill excavation, so that's was, you know, if we can move it, great. If not, then at a minimum, get the stencil stamped. So
Okay.
Yeah, that's why I put the word consider at the front end, so that we had some some room for this discussion.
And do you need us to put a condition in it all around this?
As presented.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you so much. Appreciate the presentation. Anybody else have any questions before we?
Going back to what Mike was saying, because it just clicked, and and I don't know if you're going to do it. I've seen them before at a couple hotels I've been at that they have the outdoor fire pits. They actually have timers on the gas line.
Yep. So those do exist, and I'd be more than willing to, you know, put it to the owner that because even even from just the practical standpoint, the timer is really saving everybody money.
Exactly.
So it
Go with you.
Yeah.
So if somebody leaves it on and forgets.
Exactly. It would go off, and then it's not even a state concern.
Perfect.
Anybody else? Any last second questions? Okay, thank you again.
Not a problem.
All right. Need a motion in a second, please.
Okay, I'll step up. Excuse me, I'm not going to cough too much. I'd like to make a motion for site plan approval for PAR Spring LLC for the conversion of existing administrative office into two residential units. Two building additions construct fire pit grilling areas and construction of deferred parking spaces at Five Spring Lane.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Everybody ready to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Closed. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Rock.
You too. Thanks.
Have a great night. Thank you. All right, our third item on the agenda is a motion to continue the Hayes Kaufman Farmington Associates LLC application. Can I get a motion in a second, please?
Okay, I'll make a motion to this is for continuance, correct?
Yes. Yes.
But I don't, do I have to put any dates?
We're continuing it to May 5.
Okay. Okay.
May 6.
May 6, yeah.
May 6, sorry.
Oh, I'm looking at, see, I'm just looking at the agenda. Sorry. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to provide a continuance to Hayes Kaufman Farmington Associates LLC for a site plan approval for patio improvements, ADA parking improvements, and repaving of parking lot at 838 Farmington Avenue with a continuance to the May 6, 2024 meeting.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. All right, we have a, as our fourth item, a CGS 8-24 referral. Shannon, I assume you're?
Yes, this is mine.
Covering that.
I am covering this. So our land acquisition committee, Town Manager's Office and Town Council have been working with the property owner WW2 LLC for the purchase of 9300 to 9307 Glen Hollow Drive located on the west side of town. And it is shown here on this graphic, there's approximately six and a half acres included in this. And it's part of a subdivision. It was part of the Bridgehampton subdivision. And it would have been a continuation of the existing Glen Hollow Drive, which is accessed off of Burlington Road, if I've got all my roads straight in my head. And so the six, sorry, eight lots and the road again are six, 6.5 acres. They are residential lots, still vacant. It was our 40 zone. It connects to existing open space and provides preservation of additional upland habitat to Unionville Brook and an unnamed tributary to the Unionville Brook. You can see the two appraisals, 610,000 and 840,000. Here's a larger view of the property. So again, there's Burlington Road, Glen Hollow Drive. Here's the eight lots, the six and a half acres. The highlighted in blue is the land area that's already town open space. You can see the areas it's contiguous to. So this is this 9292 is 52.5 acres of open space that came to the town as part of the Bridgehampton Crossing development. And then to the lower level, that's where the 8076 is, is another 8.3 acres that came to us as part of, I believe, the old field in Hamilton Notch or Hemlock Notch developments, excuse me. So those came to us at that particular time. So in totality, we'd have over 65 acres of land contiguous town open space. So there's a number of things that are advantageous, obviously, with it being connected to existing open space, existing 60 acres. It helps eliminate these isolated pockets. It puts nice one contiguous tract. It does provide additional upland protection to the Unionville Brook and the unnamed tributary. The Unionville Brook is here running north-south. It runs north under Burlington. It actually comes out of Lake Garda, the the Lake Garda Dam comes up, and then this is Unionville Brook running north-south. It continues north under River Road, kind of through a couple of developments, and then connects into the Farmington River under the trail. The unnamed tributary is here at the TOA slope of these eight lots and runs in an east-west, actually from west to east and connects into the Unionville Brook and approximately this location. And then continues, the water stream continues north. And there's a robust wildlife habitat within this community of open space. I have the Wetland delineation report from 2005, and there's a number of bird species, mammals, reptiles, fish that use this area and call it home. So it gives, again, it's just additional protection. So there's a recommendation put forth to Town Council to go ahead with the purchase. The purchase price is at $600,000. Town Council held their public hearing on April 1. And this was the presentation that was provided to Town Council at that time. They then, as part of that, submit then out the 8-24 referral to this commission. And the 8-24 refers to the Connecticut General Statute section that requires that any town purchase be referred out to the Town Plan and Zoning Commission for a review and then recommendation back to the Town Council. And as part of this, I also discuss this with the Conservation Commission plus Wetland Daykeeping as an advisory board to TPZ. And the Conservation Commission viewed this acquisition favorably for the same, the same reasons. So the same information has been shared with each body. Um, I can answer any questions or try to. Um, if this is successful with, uh, your commission, then a positive referral letter will go back to the town council. They will receive that report, uh, their May fourteenth meeting. And at that point, will likely, uh, take up a vote to whether or not to proceed with the acquisition. And then that then gives the town manager permission to proceed with. Purchase and sale agreements, et cetera, and signing, doing all the signatory. Items to actually go through that transaction.
Thank you. All right, do we have any questions? Go through once. Rose, any questions?
Matt? That makes sense to me.
Just one question. If we don't go through with this. Is it going to get developed?
Most likely. It's an approved, it's. Are approved. And someone, if they were interested, I, there's considerable where you couldn't just start building the lots. The roadway infrastructure and and utility infrastructure has to be put in place first before those lots can be constructed.
But they're not wetlands, they're buildable lots.
Those are buildable lot, correct. They are not, so they have a wetland approval, so as as well as a TPZ approval, there is a wetland approval. And those were both reapproved, I want to say. Twenty twenty? It was COVID when I did the site walk with wetlands. So for the reapproval. Uh, now, i- it helps, uh, it will eliminate a wetland impact in that the water line in order to service these eight lots. Comes from Gateshead. There's a stub. Out either on, I think it's lot seven. So there's a crossing in approved wetland crossing. Um, of that unnamed tributary. So, uh, obviously with the purchase of this and move it to open space, it would eliminate that work. That was part of the development approval. And this was originally approved back in two thousand and five. So it was reapproved in twenty ish.
Yeah, I I have no problems with it. I think it's a great addition. I'm just. You know, curious about that. Like, if we can't come up with the money or something happens, they're buildable lots that will get.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Thank you. Liz?
No, I think it's a great opportunity for the town. I hope we can jump on it.
Dave?
Yeah, I would agree. Is it used? Is any of that space used at all right now? That this be the pit place we own?
So it should, i- it's any of the town open space, uh, can be used for passive recreation. So there are, uh, a number of trails through there. We have even prior to this area being developed and it's it's noted even in the wetland report, there were issues with, um. Uh, ATV. Use throughout that area, um, that continues. Sporadically, we now have more eyes on it with some of the homes and the, uh, perimeter, because this all had been open. So, uh. We've had to have police out there. We've had a few meetings with police and cameras and signs and. It's a interesting endeavor to keep people off our town lands and their ATVs and motocross bikes, et cetera. So. It is also used passively. As well for hiking and it's beautiful. I've walked pretty much. All four corners of it. It's beautiful. Beautiful land.
So there, are there trails in there maintained or?
There are not maintained. So there are trails through there. There's, there are not blaze trail or open mode. Unless it's the memorial, the memorial forest has blaze trails. Most of our open space does not have blaze trails, but there are, there are trail, it would be. Easy, you know, you could walk right up, um, Glen Hollow, you could. In theory, park in the cul-de-sac and walk in. There's a trailhead there. That is mountain bike and whatever trail and you can walk right in and because it is. Um, a forested. Upland area, it's, you can see through, so it's not, uh, there's not a lot of undergrowth. There is in some areas, but in many of the areas you can. You can see right through and walk and be able to to navigate yourself through there. Um, fairly easily. And there's a couple. You said, there's a sewer line. We've got, I was going to go click a layer on on a stagnant map. Um, there is a sewer line that runs, uh, similar to somewhat along with the, uh, Unionville Brook, kind of in parallel in that north, south direction. Providing, uh, some sewer access. So. So obviously, some of those right away areas, the utility corridors, um, get maintained enough so that we can access. Uh, the utilities as needed.
Thanks.
Bruce?
Fascinating. I I concur. I think this is a really good thing. Let's do this.
Mike?
So you said there's a water connection. Are these going to connect to sewer? And natural Unionville, understanding as some natural gas connection to some places.
Uh, so if if these lots were developed. Then their water connection would come from Gateshead. Uh, the sewer would have to be brought up from Burlington Road. Or it would have to cross the Unionville Brook. The as design plan shows the sewer coming up. All the way up along Glen Hollow. And it would then afford those, those homes are all on septic system. Uh, they would have the opportunity to connect for a fee, obviously.
So they have the option of septic as well?
No, no. So is this, this development, um, any new development? Is required to be on. Uh, on our public sewer system. There are certain math, there's a mathematical formula that goes with that, but this development as approved. Was required to be on the, uh, public sewer system and to make that connection. So that's why, so. Yes, they're buildable lots, but there's a considerable amount of work that would need to be done prior to those lots being able to be. Sold a- and even start to do the construction associated with those lots, because the roadway and infrastructure needs to be done first.
And no natural gas connection.
I have no idea. Honestly, I don't know where the nearest natural gas line would be. I don't, I don't know.
I was just curious.
Obviously, none of that's taking, so if it goes open space, then none of it, right? There are no utility connections. It's all left in its natural state.
And when you spoke about the, uh, species report, w- was that concentrated throughout? All the property areas or the unnamed?
Correct. Nope. So it was, uh, correct. It was for the, uh, entire. It it was for the entire subdivision, uh, for the review of the entire subdivision. I suppose keeping in mind that the. The predominant wet area is the open space area that we were looking at on that map. So it's where those two. If I put on. Okay, so this is. Here's this Glen Hollow. Here's this wet area. So the development. Uh, comes right over to the town line. Uh, almost over to the town line. And it's got Glen Hollow. It has this entire wetland area. Uh, Longridge Court had been part of the development. And you can see we've got, there's a bridge crossing here on Bridge Hampton, and then there's a bridge crossing here on Bridge Hampton. And this wet area here. So. Predominantly, the species inventory was focused on this general area as that's the prime wetland area. And prime resource that was, uh. Deeded to town open space as part of that development.
Thanks so much, Shannon.
Certainly.
All right, makes total sense to me, too. Open space is a good thing always, it seems like, and this one in particular seems to make a lot of sense, so. Um, can we get a motion in a second? Let's. Just check one more time. Any other, like, burning questions come up? Motion in a second, please.
Okay, and this is a motion in the positive?
For a positive referral to town or a positive report back to town council.
Okay, uh, I'd like to make a motion for a positive referral. Or a positive report for the, um. Uh, CGS eight dash twenty four referral concerning the purchase of property owned by WD. Two? Okay, LLC located at. Um, ninety three hundred to ninety three oh seven Glen Hollow Drive at six and a half. Approximately six and a half acres.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Absolutely. That's great. Um, all right, our last item, we need to accept an application from Specialty Transportation. Get a motion in a second, please.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to accept the application for a special permit. By Specialty Transportation, Inc., one fifteen Britton Avenue. For a special permit for school bus transportation facility and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of May twenty 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 four.
Great. All in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. All right, planners report.
Yeah, just, uh, two quick things. There was one that I had included in the agenda review, um. And then one small additional one. So we have, the first one is our friends at Wooden Tap. Have the outdoor dining area that. Uh, probably most of us are familiar with. And this outdoor patio, you can see the sea of umbrellas on their outdoor patio. Um, and that area is permitted, it it is a, as part of their original site plan review. Um, and they've got a barrier to separate from the vehicular traffic, the large, uh, planters in place. What they are looking to do is. Get rid of the sea of umbrellas and put a formal structure up. With a pergola, uh, that has a tilt roof that can be closed. So in the event of rain. They can close. This tilt slat roof, um, and it's a louvered roof. That, uh, they can activate.
So it's like a shutter?
Basically, it's. And then it's on just enough of a cant that it. Then will funnel the rain to the end. And the columns act as the downspout. Structure.
Fascinating.
Yeah. So there's a few items that staff is working through, um, with the owners, uh, at Wooden Tap, but. Uh, they're not, they're not increasing before I would, I'd sign off on this, but. For the pergola and they're not, they're not increasing the seating area, they're not increasing the the capacity. Um, they just, they want to be able to get rid of the umbrellas and put in something that's a little more substantial, so that when you get. I'll say your average rain, they're not trying to shift people inside or. Or worse, not be able to shift people and similarly for their waitstaff. Obviously, if it's a hard driving rain. That isn't gonna gonna do it. Um, but they are not enclosing it. And I have confirmation on that from the owner himself. Uh, they want to leave that view to the river open, so they don't. They want something a little more permanent, but still leaves some openness to the, uh, that seating area. So this is what they're looking to do. If there's no objection, then I'll. There's a few zoning items that we needed to work through with these gentlemen, so. Uh, once they're back into compliance, then I'm inclined to go ahead and sign off on this if there's no. Concern with, uh, the commission regarding this. Matt, you're good?
All good.
Okay, so then the next one is. The former Claudia's, uh, is now Green Tales. Dog shop, um. They have a deck at the front of the building that's in need of repair, so the deck is going to come off. And they're looking to do a deck and ramp. We've just, staff just started looking at this and I've got a email into the owner. Right now, it's a deck and ramp. The ramp comes back out into this driveway area. I've asked him to see if the debt, if it, if they can get the ramp to come out to the parking, seems. For me. Makes makes more sense. But this is the plan, so you can see this is the deck area and then a ramp down. To a paved area into the driveway. But regardless, they're they're looking to do some. The the decks in need of repair, which we we've known. So, uh, again, uh, assuming I can work through these logistics and it doesn't, I certainly, we don't want to lose parking in that area. Um, but I think they can be able to bring this down along the side of the building and bring it back into. The parking area so that they can get. If the purpose is ADA accessibility, let's get it to a parking. So. Uh, if there's any. Concerns at handling this at the staff level, again, it's, it seems to be pretty much a one for one. The deck was there. We're going to allow them to replace it in kind and not an expansion. Uh, except for the the ramp. There there had been a ramp, but it had been at the rear side of the building.
Makes sense.
Makes sense.
Seeing head nods across the board, so, all right. Okay. That was all I had this evening.
Anybody else have any burning questions for? For Shannon? Liz has one.
This might, you might have no clue about this. So. I walk up and down Mountain Road a lot and. We've had a surveyor and there's new, like. Pink. Pins pins with pink tags and everything. Down to the how the, like the Noah Wallace cut through.
Yeah.
And then I I don't, I can't remember whether, I don't think it's in front of the town, the town owned houses. Up, um, to. Um, our house and I I think it stopped, so it's like three or four properties in a row.
So all in this this section, so basically from School Street up to like.
Up to, not even that far. Like, um, I think twenty two. Like the Cheshire's. Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm dropping names here. Yeah, right there. So.
Well, School Street to High Street.
Yeah, roughly. In essence, and I, we, I, my neighbor had mentioned something about maybe thinking about moving. So I thought, oh, they're just checking their, you know, their survey, but it's not just their house. So I'm just curious. And my husband said he saw surveyors in other parts of town, so I didn't.
I don't, I don't know. So it could be, um. It could be, it could be somebody, it could be a surveyor trying to get their property boundaries. So again, because some of the lots in this area date back so far.
Oh, yes.
So they're trying to pull to a nearest reference. And work their way in, um, particularly if there happen to be a property line dispute. Then trying to narrow, you know, really fine tune, uh, and even if. If you've had the joy of reading some historic deeds and they're referencing fence lines and the old oak tree and this, like, oh, wow, okay. So it it could be that. It could be a utility company, um, but I'm. I don't have a firm answer for you on that.
I just was very curious. I even noticed it goes down, um. Down the walkway, the right away to Noah Wallace.
Sure, okay.
And someone's gardens aren't quite on their property.
Yeah, well.
That never happens.
Never happens. I don't know, yeah. It was just, it was just very, it was, it was interesting.
Sure. No, I understand when all of a sudden you see the the spray paint marks, the pink flagging and the orange flagging, yeah, it it gets your attention.
Yeah.
Understood. Yeah, no, I I'm not aware of anything town related in that area. Our surveyor's been busy getting the, uh, garden plots all.
Number one priority.
Whole court press last week.
I'm not surprised.
Only imagine. Anything else for Shannon? Anybody has? Good? Good? All right, before we, um, approve the minutes from the last meeting, just a quick public thank you to Liz for covering the last couple meetings. In my medical absence, and I think Matt covered, uh, secretary duty, so much appreciated. Um, need a motion and a second to approve the minutes, please.
Okay, I'd be glad to. Let's, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the April eighth twenty twenty four Town Plan and Zoning Commission meeting.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Meeting adjourned.